Sorry to bring up the party at seven o'clock. All right, good evening, everyone, and welcome to tonight's City Council meeting, January 19th, 2021. We'll call the meeting to order. First to order business on here is our invocation. And I believe Dustin Maroni from the Church of Jesus Christ Latter Day Saint is here for our invocation, so please remain standing afterwards, and we'll do the pledge of allegiance.
Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. We thy children gather together this evening, truly grateful for the blessings of democracy that allow us to meet together, to exercise our voice, and to govern our people. We are mindful of the transitions taking place tomorrow at the federal level. We pray for peace and a peaceful transition of power to happen. We pray for all those who are there to preserve and protect that sacred day. We pray that it might go without incident, and will continue to be viewed as a sacred and holy day in our country. We are mindful, Father, of the pandemic that continues to rage throughout this world, and how it affects our community. We are so grateful for all of the doctors and nurses and many healthcare workers who are working tirelessly to preserve the health and well-being of our community members. We pray for them, and we pray for the vaccines that are being distributed, that they might be effective, that life may return back to normal soon, that our schools may be reopened, that our children and grandchildren may resume their education and continue to learn. We are grateful, Father, for all those who fight locally and overseas to protect and preserve our freedoms and our safety. We pray for them and their families, help us to bring honor to them, and to remember them and their sacrifice. We recognize the hatred and anger that's happening in so many places. We pray that we might be examples here in our own community of peace, of kindness, of gentleness, to listen to one another, and to be mindful of the needs all around us that we can serve, and that we can uplift, and be examples and light to our community. We pray for thy Spirit to be here in this meeting, that our mayor and our city council or city leaders will be able to deliberate appropriately and listen to each other, and thy Spirit might be here, that we can be unified in our decisions as we strive to lead this community. We love thee, we love the example of thy Son, Jesus Christ, and pray that thou will help us to remember him and strive to follow his example in serving others and in caring for the poor and the needy. And these things we pray now, dear Father, in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with everything and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Maroni. I'm glad you didn't have to arm wrestle Mr. Cunningham. Thank you, Bob.
Thank you.
All right. The roll call show that we have one absent, Donna McBride. She is on the phone, so she doesn't need an excuse, does she? Because she's called in. Okay. Hi, Donna.
Hi, everybody.
All right, just checking to make sure you're still there.
Yeah.
Next is the minutes.
As far as the minutes go, Mayor, a move of approval of the city council regular meeting minutes from January 4th is presented, and that we accept for the record the planning and zoning commission minutes from October 1st, November 5th, December 3rd, and December 8th. And I'm just curious, they're pretty old minutes, but going back to October or whatever. But I move that we accept those for the record.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, the minutes as presented are approved. Next item is claims against the city.
Mayor McFarland, I move to accept and pay the claims dated December 30th to January 12th, 2021, as presented. Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, claims are approved. Meeting agenda approval. Does staff have any changes? Any changes from the council? Okay, seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes as presented, or the agenda as presented.
Yeah.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, the agenda is approved. Next, which we've been waiting for, for two months, to recognize our past council member, Mary Cortson. And Mary, would you please approach the lectern up here for me? Something.
Nope.
You get it?
Oh, flowers.
See, you thought you were gonna get a wooden nickel.
Yay! And a picture.
And a picture.
And a picture.
What's the picture?
Oh, those are beautiful.
What's the picture, Mary?
Those are beautiful. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Maybe it's your picture from earlier. Oh, it's the picture from...
It's me.
Danny, why don't you get up where you can get a better picture?
You get a good picture?
Okay.
So, in appreciation to Mary Cortson for her dedicated service as Casa Grande City Council member from June 4th, 2007, through December 7th, 2020, June 1st of 2009, to June 7th of 2021, and then also June 2nd of 2014 to June 1st of 2015. So those were all your terms.
Those are all mine.
So congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you, I appreciate it.
Should've taken out of the rack.
Yeah.
You didn't want this anyway, did you?
No.
Okay, good.
Oh, thank you.
There we go.
Okay.
Feel better?
Is my lipstick smeared?
Yeah, did you see her smiling?
Yeah.
So, thank you so much.
Oh, thank you. Thank you very much.
And in your name, we donated $825 to the lighthouse, to the food bank.
Oh, thank you. Oh, that's awesome.
Name of Mary Cortson, so...
Well, oh, that means so much to me.
Everybody signed the card, I think, so...
Well, thank you.
Yeah, do you wanna say a couple words?
I do have just a couple. You know, the dispatch was really nice. They let me write an article about my experience and how great it was, and I appreciate that. But you know what I forgot to do, I didn't do, is I didn't really thank my husband, Dan Cortson.
That's how it goes. I always...
He supported me through my entire time on the council. He gave up long vacations to accommodate my meeting schedule and put up with me when I was distracted by city business. Once again, I want to thank former Bob, Mayor Bob Jackson, and current Mayor Craig McFarland for their leadership, and most of all, for their patience. It was much appreciated. Thanks once again to all of the people with whom I served on council. I really enjoyed my time on council because of each and every member. Finally, thank you to all of our residents. I ask you to continue to stay engaged with our city, follow what is happening, and participate in the city's success. Thank you very much. It'll make me cry. Thank you very much.
Wait, Mary, I've got to...
Oh. Your name?
I gave you the pen. There's not a lot of pens left.
And your piece of crystal.
It's only got a few chips.
I know, they're all tripped.
And, and Mary, before you leave, I just wanted to also thank you, and thank Danny and Jennifer that are here, you know, for just supporting Mary in this leadership role. She's been a mentor to me, and being a female on the city council, there weren't many of us. Actually, Mary was, you know, one of, that we haven't had her in a long time, I don't even know how long. But, you know, I really, really do want to thank you for your leadership, your mentorship, and your influence for us female leaders, and paving the way. And, you know, for your family to support you. I know how hard it is, and, you know, to have, you know, that family because you're away from your home, and have to come back from vacations early, and things like that. But, but thank you to all of you for everything you've done, and especially for us women that are serving our community. So, thank you.
Mary, I just, I wanna say that we're happy to have Jeff, but we're gonna really miss you. You and I sometimes are on opposite ends of everything, but it always had all the respect in the world for you, and, and I'm not going for the women thing, Lisa.
Smart man.
You keep these women just like a home. You keep them happy, or you're in trouble. But I hope you enjoy yourself, and, and got a grandson that's going to college now, huh?
Another one.
Yeah.
And we didn't get those green bike lanes, but...
We'll carry the banner for you, Mary.
We will think of you, always.
We might have to work on a compromise.
When you come in with your petition, we'll...
Well, watch out.
She's got a lot of spare time now.
No, Danny will keep her busy, I'm sure.
I thought she'd be retired fully by now, but she's still got her little business going. She likes that, too.
All right. That's all good.
I get a little beer money once in a while.
There you go.
And Mary, I know Donna's on the line, and Donna's the one that coordinated the donations to the lighthouse. So, Donna, I know you're on, so thank you for coordinating that.
Yes.
Donna, that means a whole lot.
She's well worth it, thank you.
Yeah.
Go ahead, Donna.
I said she's well worth it. Thank you so much, Mary.
Thank you. That's the best tribute anybody could do for me, so.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mary.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
See you, guys. Don't be a stranger. All right. Okay, next item is item G on our agenda. It's the consent agenda. All items listed with an asterisk are considered routine matters and will be enacted by one motion and one roll call vote of the council. There'll be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or member of the public so requests, in which event the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered in its normal sequence of the agenda. Does anybody have anything you want to pull off the agenda? Anybody from the public? Okay, seeing none, then can I get a roll call vote, please? Oh, I need a motion.
Mayor McFarland, I would move for approval of the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Thanks for keeping me honest, Brett. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Now, can I get a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Lavender?
Yes.
Councilmember McBride?
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Councilmember Herman?
Yes.
Councilmember Powell?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Huddleston?
Yes.
Mayor McFarland?
Yes. All right. Next item is a ward of contracts. We have one, I1, ordinance number 3251.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of city council, staff recommends that the mayor and city council approve the expenditure of funds with Clark Transportation Solutions utilizing the existing Maricopa County Department of Transportation contract number 200125C for traffic signal poles and components. The funds to be expended under this cooperative use agreement from MCDOT include purchase of components. This will be upgrades to our existing traffic control system and communications back to our traffic management center at the North Operations Center. The expenditure of these funds will also be used for our, for our streets division, for purchases of components for regular upkeep of our existing system as well. And the components that are gonna be purchased are in direct support of the council's strategic plan for infrastructure to implement a traffic plan to improve the travel system on our major arterials. With that, I'm gonna turn it over to Dwayne Itell, our traffic engineer, to kind of give you an update on where we're at with that five-year plan.
Thank you, Kevin.
Yeah, so I just wanted to spend a few minutes kind of reminding you all about our five-year plan and where we are in the plan. So back in 2018, the strategic plan asked us to improve traffic flow and reduce congestion by 25%. And I'll have to admit, when I first looked at that, I thought, how are we gonna do that? But we sat down and brainstormed and came up with a plan. So, as I said, the 25%. So, we're in the third year of the five-year plan. Now, we presented the five-year plan to you a couple years ago when we first kicked it off. So, this year, we're, we're gonna construct the traffic management center, and we have done that. It's out at the NOC. It's a 65-inch TV where we can look at the video detection cameras at different intersections around town. Now, not all of them yet, but that's part of what tonight is. So, our plan with what we're doing tonight is to interconnect all the signals on Florence Boulevard, have all the same brand of controllers down Florence Boulevard, then interconnect the signals on Trekkel, and then a couple other ones like Peart and McCartney. Now, once we have all the radios and all these, we have new controllers, we can bring all that data and that video back to the traffic management center, so we can sit there and see what's going on in intersection. We can look at past data, so there's a whole bunch of things we can do to hopefully make all the traffic flow better. We've also, in the five-year plan, had some improvements of intersections and adding turn lanes. First couple of years, we added some left turn, right turn lanes around town, and this year, we're gonna do Trekkel and Florence Boulevard intersection, make some improvements there, dual lefts and right turn lane. So, it's all part of our five-year plan. Now, as far as, as all these controllers on Florence Boulevard, what's exciting about that is, they can talk to each other. So, not, not this year, but in one of our future phases, we hope to have it, now that we have all this equipment in place, we can then, there's a computer program we can buy where all these signals talk to each other. For instance, if you go to Arizona and Florence and push the pedestrian button, that's what usually messes up our corridor progression, because we have to give so much time for them to get across the street. Well, once we have this new program, which is in a future year, all these controllers are talking to each other, and they can go, oh, we don't want to turn that on right now, because if we do that, it'll mess up the progression. We'll wait 10 seconds or 15 seconds, or something like that. So, it's pretty exciting, and of course, for a city our size, we're right on the cutting edge of all this kind of stuff, so... This map here, kind of just, it's in your packet also, so you can look at it closer, but it, it sort of shows where all the radios are, the signals that we're planning on doing. So ultimately, sometime way in the future, we'll be able to have all the signals in town interconnected, but these first few years, we just want to get the major arterials done. Now, part of our five-year plan was to look at a before and after study. So, we have a before study on Florence Boulevard. We decided it was pretty hard to do the whole city, so we just concentrated on Florence Boulevard. So, we have a system called the cyclica, and they're in the controllers on Florence Boulevard right now. What they do is collect all kinds of data. They detect cell phones and cars going by, and there's an algorithm to make that turn into speeds and travel time and volumes and everything. And we've done a lot of looking at actual traffic counts and what the cyclica system shows up, and they're almost identical, so it's, it's a real good system. So, once we're all done here, we have those systems down Florence Boulevard, we'll be able to look at the after study to see, did we improve by 25% or 30% maybe? So, that's where we are right now. I just wanted to kind of bring you up to date of where we're going. I find it all pretty exciting.
Anybody have any questions?
I just think it's a great idea for our community.
I had one question that some people asked me. Like, these cameras, can they be used for traffic accidents, or they be used for anything like that, or is it strictly for traffic control?
So, they're detecting the traffic for the signal to know when to change and so on. They don't record, we don't record the video, we don't have any, it's a huge amount of recordings. We don't have a way to do that.
Okay.
And they don't tilt and zoom or anything, either. They're just looking...
Because people always ask about the cameras, I tell them, no, it just, just shows how many cars are in the lanes.
Yeah, so if there's a crash over somewhere, it may not pick it up.
Lisa?
And of course, technology amazes me, and that, you know, I mean, it's amazing that that's all going on when you don't even know. But my question is, do you, you know, of course, we have to do these traffic impact studies when development's coming in. I know in P&amp;Z, there are a couple developments. So, can this, will this type of study help with that, like traffic impact, or no? Do we still have to go and do a whole new study, or studies when, where new development is coming in?
I think it'll make the studies easier. You know, we'll be able to supply them with historic traffic counts, which we have a hard time to do right now, so I'd save them some money not having to count traffic. But there's still, what does all their new traffic do to everything? There's still that study that needs to be done.
Okay. Thank you.
Bob? Specifically, the contract that we're approving tonight, is, is that, that's for funding for some of these radios and such, or no?
Yes, it's for radios, it's for controllers, traffic signal controllers.
Okay. Some of which we already have, yes? We're kind of filling in the gaps?
Right, well, and then we're, we have a bunch of really old ones.
Okay. Okay.
So, part of the process is to standardize our equipment so that we have the same equipment in each one.
Thank you, Dwayne.
Not all the signals are gonna be changed at once. This is, you know, our third year of a five-year program. Even after our five-year program, we're still gonna need to be doing some upgrades to other signals. So, some of the ideas of the equipment that we're purchasing, if you see a controller at one of the signals, those are those aluminum boxes out there. To purchase an entire system, it's $34,200. To replace the components inside of one of those boxes is $27,600. So then, we're gonna be adding the communication modules in each of those so that the signals can talk to each other. That's $2,500. And then the radios, so that they can communicate from point A to point B, that's the $2,900. So, we've got $170,000 of expenditures for this phase of this project, but we're also using this contract to purchase other equipment. So, let's say we have a pole knocked down, or a car hits one of those controllers. We'll be using that contract to help cover those costs as well. So, the contract we're gonna use is gonna cover a number of things, including this project.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, go ahead. Kevin, time of day makes a difference on some of those changes. I know on Peart and Florence Boulevard, with the, with the school gets out at about four, and they line up in two lanes, the passing lane and the outside lane, and you just have one to get by. Can they program it all for time, time of day, or those type of issues where you have...
We're, right now, we're limited, but once we buy that computer program and we have each of the signals talking to each other, that's where we get to start to look at some of those little things that impact a signal.
Okay.
And then see how that impacts other signals, and then through that algorithm, it can allow those signals to make those minor little changes to hopefully address some of those things. But I will be, the, I'll tell you right now, we can never solve the school traffic issues just because of the sheer volume in a short amount of time.
Same time.
We're just never gonna be able to solve it all, but we can definitely make it better.
We have to think of that next time we approve something, huh?
Okay. Any other questions? Thank you, Kevin. All right, seeing no more questions or comments, this, I'll entertain a motion. I need an ordinance number first. It's like I haven't done this before.
Ordinance number 3251, an ordinance of the council of the city of Casa Grande, Arizona, authorizing an agreement with Clark Electric Sales Incorporated, doing business as Clark Transportation Solutions to provide traffic system control components, authorizing the expenditure of public funds, and authorizing execution of a contract with or purchase order to Clark Transportation Solutions.
Mayor McFarland, I move to approve ordinance number 3251 as presented.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Can I please get a roll call vote, Colonel?
Councilmember Lavender?
Yes.
Councilmember McBride?
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Councilmember Herman?
Yes.
Councilmember Powell?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Huddleston?
Yes.
Mayor McFarland?
Yes. All right. Next item is item J, it's boards and commissions. Just want to remind everybody that we do have some openings coming up, so please check with the clerk's office. And then we do have one appointment for tonight, and this is to consider approving the appointment of Andrea Varela to the Board of Appeals with a term to expire on August 4th, 2023. Does anybody have any questions or comments? First, I just want to thank Andrea for her service and volunteering. She is new to our boards and commissions, so this is her first...
There, I move approval.
Okay?
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded to approve Andrea Varela. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Congratulations to Andrea. Yeah. And then the next item on our agenda really is reports. So, I think since we have Donna on the phone, Donna, why don't we start with you, and then if you need to cut off, then you, you can.
Thank you. No reports tonight, just everybody stay safe and healthy. Thank you.
All right, thank you. And then, Bob, do you want to go next?
Sure. The only thing I have, Mayor, is...
The only thing I have, Mayor, is you had asked me to attend a PPP webinar. I think it was on the 6th, but I, I don't know. But anyway, I attended the webinar, and as I mentioned to you earlier, a lot of information. This is the second round of the Paycheck Protection Program. A couple of the overriding messages that they gave out is there are some changes, but they're few and far between. They are positive changes. It's not any more restrictive than it was before. So 90% of what the rules were the first time, they're in place the second time. And their overall encouragement was to contact your lender so that you can discuss your eligibility and to make that happen. Couple of the good things that are on there, and, and by the way, at the time of the seminar, it had not actually opened yet, but I understand it did on the 11th, January 11th, it opened up. So we would encourage small business owners to contact their lender. You can use the same lender as you used before. You, you still have a chance of qualifying in the second round. And you can change lenders, too. If you weren't happy the first time, you can change. A couple of the changes on this time around is there is opportunity for nonprofits and churches to apply. There's apparently a 15% rule that you're, no more than 15% of your revenues can come from lobbying efforts. So my assumption is the nonprofits and the churches probably know what that's all about. They also said that this second round will, will lend favor to first-time borrowers and minority-owned businesses. Anyway, most of the rules are the, are the same, but contact your lender and start the application process.
And you're going to give a, kind of a link to our PIO?
I will.
Group, and we'll post that on our website?
Okay. I will. That's all.
Okay. Great. Thank you, Bob.
Thanks for attending that, too. You bet.
Mr. Powell?
I, I just would follow up with what I said earlier about our community. I'm really, really proud to be from Casa Grande and to be able to be on the council. And I'm seeing so many improvements. I think people are appreciative. Traffic is really heavy on Florence Boulevard, which is a good thing for us, as long as they got their wallet with them. But the, as I say, I, I'm just happy with, with what's happening and the way things are going, and really proud of our staff for the leadership we get. And, and our mayor is, deserves a pat on the back because he does a lot of extra work on the pandemic and things like that. And, and so that's what I have to say.
Thank you, David. Appreciate that. Matt?
Thanks, Mayor. Glad to be here tonight. We had a youth commission hybrid meeting last weekend, which was very nice. The kids were excited, and they're trying to see if they can make some action about having a, some sort of graduation ceremony this year because they felt last year they were really disappointed. They didn't, the ones that graduated didn't get to have it. So they're taking on that. And then they're planning a shredding day in April after Tax Day, and a Garden of Sunshine cleanup next month because we figured that's an outdoor activity where they can distance and be outside and do some community service. So they were excited to talk to other kids. And I just asked everyone to keep all the kids, high school and grade school, everyone your thoughts and prayers for the tough time that they're having right now. They were just, it's just tough on them. So the kids are just doing the best they can, and that's what we're helping them do is just keep, keep some sort of positivity in their lives. So, and Crystal and Kendra, the advisors, do a great job with that, too, and they're, they're great with the kids. And also, we had a nice economic development outlook bulletin that came out last month. So it's exciting and a lot of stuff going on in town. And of course, shop local. That's what we always say. Thanks.
Lisa?
I just wanted to remind everyone of the local, the City of Casa Grande CARES funding is, the application is available online. So we have to remember, make sure you tell the mayor has the flyer right there. So I think they're going to have their first meeting to review applications next week. Of course, it goes, you know, up to $20,000 to businesses and nonprofits, to go towards PPE, you know, these types of things, shields, anything they've done for their businesses. And if any restaurant is extending their patio for business, that covers that also. So make sure you get the word out. And, you know, I know Dick talked a little bit about the community, and, you know, there's so much that people are doing for the community during these times. And even though we're seeing some great sales tax dollars and revenues are coming in, but there are still people struggling. And so it is, you know, I'm, I'm impressed with the, the Homeless Coalition and the activities that they're doing. You know, there's a subcommittee with the, what is it? The eviction prevention program because the moratorium is going to expire at the end of January. So there's going to be a lot of people that are going to be evicted out of their homes. So Chief Laos has been very proactive, as well as Constable Elliott and Akara. And the mayor and I met with them or talked to them about having a prevention program and starting to target apartment complexes and rental housing and sharing the resources with people before the, you know, they are evicted. The experts, of course, are telling us that it's way more expensive to evict someone out of a home and then try to rehouse them. So if we can do whatever we can to keep people inside. So there's, you know, lots of resources. Pinell County Housing has quite a minimum. They had $600,000 that they are trying to distribute to the community. So if you hear of someone, please let them know that Pinell County has those resources. And then, of course, the City of Casa Grande has allocated funds, CARES funding to Akara to help with, with these resources. But, you know, that's one of the things that the Homeless Coalition is doing. There's also a, a nonprofit in town called Good Samaritan LLC, and they have three housing units for the homeless. They have one up and running now that they're, they're housing homeless. The one that they have now is for men, I believe. Is that right, Mayor? I think the one now is for men. And they have two more units that they're trying, they're going to get permitting to house some, some of the homeless. We're just so impressed with this organization, and they have, you know, mental health specialists, nurses that are, are on staff to assist. So I'm sure you're going to start seeing some of the permitting information come through the city. But we were excited because, of course, we wanted to do a temporary housing-type program, and this is an answer to, to get people right off the street. And then they have programs in place where they can provide jobs. So, you know, and, and when we talked about this a couple of years ago, when we were trying to combine resources and, you know, just try to, just, you know, all come together, you know, it, it's slowly coming together, where it's kind of like a one-stop shop. And this, the resource center is a huge asset. A lot of these organizations are counting on the resource center, even though their numbers are, their hours are limited, but they're trying to get up and going again Mondays through Fridays from eight to three, I believe it is, or eight to five.
Eight to four or eight to five?
Eight to five.
Eight to five.
So they, Akara had a little bit of an issue with COVID and their staff, but they're getting staffed up again. So they're, they're trying to, you know, if you, people can come by appointment or knock on the door and someone is there. So there's a lot of things going on. A lot of the churches are doing things. The nonprofits, Rotary's been great, the Lighthouse has been great. And so, you know, just, just a lot going on to serve that community. And the Faith Alliance, as you guys have probably noticed, the last few meetings, we have had regulars here to do the prayer. We don't want to give up on that, you know, the, I mean, it, it's just nice to have, you know, at, at the beginning of our city council meeting. So we're trying, we're, it, it used to be the EAM. We're kind of reorganizing. Pastor Paul Elgin is the new president of the Faith Alliance. And as you can see, he's been really good and active in trying to pull everyone together and trying to get the, the faith community a little bit more involved and active. So I think that's it. Again, please, everyone be safe. Don't let your guard down. Numbers are super high, and so let's just try to get through this together. We can do it. So that's it.
And it's invocation.
What did I say?
Prayer.
Oh, the prayer. Invocation. Invocation. Thank you.
Thank you. And I do appreciate the emails, too. Kind of an advance notice. So that, thank Elgin for that. Thank you. Jeff?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd hoped to talk tonight about the 19th Annual Unity March, but unfortunately, on Friday, we had to cancel because of the pandemic. But I will tell you that students throughout our community are participating with the Casa Grande Alliance on the MLK Voices Project going on right now. So our students are still learning about Dr. King, his message of nonviolence. And I don't think that message has ever been more appropriate. And so, what's going on? Also, another event that was postponed that I think deserves recognition is the amazing accomplishment of the Palo Verde Elementary School staff and achieving the A-plus status by the Arizona Education Foundation. They are a hard-working staff. They believe that all students can learn no matter what. And their principal, Joanne Kramer, this is her second A-plus school. She led McCartney Ranch to the same award. Has the greatest sense of urgency that I've ever seen from an education leader. And Joanne and her staff, I believe, just deserve recognition from all of us. And hopefully, we're going to be able to celebrate that accomplishment with her and her staff before the end of this academic year. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. Thank you, Jeff. Yeah, they, they've done a phenomenal job over there. I want to just also kind of publicly thank Mary Corson for her service and for being one of our council members. She, she took her job seriously, and she did a really nice job. She was a good complement. And now we have Mr. Lavender, so we have a good replacement, but Mary will be missed. And just to add to on the how to, how to apply, it's on our website, so it's, it's casagrandeaz.gov/cares, CG cares. So if you're looking for the applications and the process. And on, on the process, it does talk about timeframes, but we did have a conversation today, is mine okay to say this? The September, October, November, October, November, December, that if somebody has not applied and they have their issues back earlier in COVID, that we were going to allow them to go ahead and submit. So you'll see it on the permit, so just know that if somebody hasn't applied and they, and they have a receipt because they didn't know how to or they didn't have a flyer, like we're going to try and get out to everybody? So that we're going to do a little better job of communicating it out to the community that they should still apply. Okay? So we want to try, help as many people as we can. Okay. And hopefully, next time, I'll have a little more information. We were contacted by the City Gate, City Gate Commercial Center, which is the old Tanger Outlet Mall. So hopefully, we're going to see at least some marketing of that property to whoever would like to buy it. So hopefully, I'll have a little more information next time we get together. We are moving forward with another project. It's over on the west side of town that looks very promising. We had a meeting with them last week, and they were very excited. They're, they're a foreign company, but looking to put a facility here along the railroad tracks. So it looks very promising, and hopefully, we'll, we'll land them. It'd be a lot of new jobs, and it might even bring a couple more companies with them. So it's a pretty exciting time. Nicola's going vertical, so over in Coolidge. We, we continue to see the strides at Lucid. I'm also aware that Atessa is actually going to now start applying for some permits and start their first racetrack. That should begin to see some grading and some activity out there. So it's a pretty, pretty exciting time in the City of Casa Grande, and, and I think that staff needs to be commended because I've got a list of 20, at least 20 businesses, and I know that they've touched every one of those businesses. That's just in the last eight months. So it's, it's been a crazy, crazy time for them, I know. And I really, I really want to thank them for their efforts. And please, continue to do what you do. We appreciate it. So we don't say that enough. And other than that, the rest I'll leave alone. Other than just to leave you with some maybe COVID numbers, they have been coming down in the last five days, so that's good news. I'm actually seeing decreases in the seven-day moving average, which is what I track, and it's steadily dropping. It's been dropping for about five days. So that's a good indication. We're still high on our, on our infection rates, though. We're still in the 30% range, which is very, very high. So please be safe. Our numbers per 100,000 are, have come down. They were over 1,000, and today, they're, as of today, they're 730. So it's going in the right direction. That's still a lot, though. Safe range is 100. So we're, we're a little ways away from that. And really, as far as testing is concerned, we're going to continue to do the testing at Lynn Cola. I know the other agencies in town will continue to do testing. We, look, we, the, the money may run out on our Lynn Cola location, but we still have another three or four weeks that we're going to keep it open, and hopefully, longer than that. But county's running out of money, and the state's not stepped up to, to support that. So we're going to continue to push that. We're also going to push for more vaccines. There are, it is, it is frustrating. I can tell you from a personal perspective, I'm trying to get a vaccine for my wife, and she bugs me every day, trying, trying to find a reservation that she can, she can get into. And I'm sure the teach, some of the teachers are experiencing the same issue because we need to get our teachers vaccinated. We need to get our elderly vaccinated. I think we've taken care of the healthcare workers. I think most of them have been, they were in the 1A group, and I think most of them were taken care of. And as we move into this 1B now. I know, and I know our, our county's Health Department Director, Dr. Spears, she's very frustrated. We got initial 20,000 doses that were spread out across 14 different community providers, right? So from Banner to Sun Life to even Safeway, Safeway was, was giving some out. And now we get like 3,500 in a pop. And then they have to divide that up amongst the 14, actually, now it's 16, 16 providers. So it doesn't go very far. So just be patient. We will get, we will get that vaccine out there. I'm hoping that with the Johnson &amp; Johnson approval, that will also add another supplier, so that should help. We just need to be patient, be, be safe, be careful, and continue to do what you've been doing. You know, mask up and, and try and keep that separation. Stay, stay within your pod. And, and then just, you know, if you feel sick, stay home. Don't go out. Don't throw a party. Okay? So anybody else have any other comments or questions? No? Okay. Seeing none, then the meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone. Thank you, Mayor.